Time is seven oh one, please rise for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shemansky. Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner. Commissioner Member Two.
Here.
Commissioner McBride. Commissioner Scarpace.
Here.
And Chair Whitliff.
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda at this time, the planning commission can't take action. Excuse me, to approve the May eighth, two thousand twenty-five agenda, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Shelley, second by Roger, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner Member Two.
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpace.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest. Is there any member of the commission that has any conflict of the agenda tonight? None?
None.
Okay, great, thank you. Approval of minutes at this time, the planning commission can approve the March thirteenth meeting, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Roger, second by Shelley, any discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner Member Two.
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpace.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. Correspondence, there has been, correspondence has been shared with the planning commission and will not be read aloud tonight. Presentation and speaker, we have none. Public hearing, nothing. Public comment on agenda-related items, is there anyone that has a comment on the agenda tonight, you have up to five minutes? Please come to the podium, name and address, please. None?
Hmm, pretty quiet.
New business, none. Old business, Tiny Homes, Mr. George Butler.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Welcome.
We're happy to be prepared to build homes in Manistee and in the city, and we'd love to do that. We're focused on a very specific income level, that we'd like to hit eighty percent AMI to a hundred percent AMI for home ownership. Stats tell us that that's unlikely, people can't buy a home for what it costs to build. And can't mortgage it, can't own it. We believe we can do that, we've done the homework on that, and we can, we can build for home ownership at eighty percent and a hundred percent AMI. New construction. For those specific target audiences, so it's home ownership, it's home, it's owner-occupied housing, which is what we want. It's for those who are in our workforce, just the lower end of our workforce. We'd like to provide for them. And the way to do it, when costs are so high per square foot, is to build with smaller square footage. Now, we're trying to tackle that and want to see if it's acceptable to you to build at your minimum square foot, which is a hundred and sixty square feet in the city. We'd like to build a little bit larger than that, ten twenty-four. But within that, to have a lesser heated space. So we're after a duplex of five twelve plus five twelve equals ten twenty-four square feet. At five hundred and twelve square feet in a duplex, we can build and sell for a homeowner at eighty percent AMI. If we build within that same ten forty square foot, if we build seven fifty of living space in a three hundred foot one-car garage, we can do that for a hundred percent AMI. If they're duplexed at the garage. If it's a single with a seven fifty living space and a three hundred foot square garage in the ten forty square foot, then that would hit at a hundred and twenty percent AMI. This is what we can do. We are not interested in building for higher incomes or higher ability. We want to try to focus on those for home ownership. Everything wheelchair accessible. Or adaptable, excuse me, wheelchair adaptable. Meaning you'd have to change out the sink and have an open cabinet underneath, but it is designed at the thirty-six inch width required and all that, so if we know from the buyer that's what we want, we just swap out the sinks, and we've got it. Everything else is ready to go. So we're hitting all the needs of the city for that end of our workforce. We can do it with new housing, something that's going to cost because it's a rehabbed old building, it's got a lot of problems, but we're talking about a new construction. We're talking about the cottage design that's so familiar in our community and people like. So that's what we'd like to do. Before we do it, we're just wondering, are you open to that? Being respectful of the square footage, so it looks like other homes that surround the area. Looks like what you require. Simply the living space is less in order to build for those income levels. And they can own a home, they don't have to rent, they can own for what they would be renting for, and they can get ahead in life. And we can find that stability in the city. Homes will be well-treated because their owner occupied. That's what we'd like to do for you, and before we go buy land and do that, we want to know if you're open. So your square footage suggests no, but these are new days and we're trying harder. We're trying harder to do for our people and do well. So if you're okay with those concepts, the five twelve and five twelve duplex, or the seven forty with a one-car garage, we would go for it, and then we have to simply respond to our neighbors like we always do. Put out the word, and are you okay with that? But since it would look like surrounding houses, we think that would be okay. So we'd like to go for it, and we have a second issue beyond those designs. And that is, in order to hit the numbers we want, we'd like to apply for TIF, and I understand that takes a minimum of five houses. And so if we can build five homes to qualify for a TIF, we want to know if a PUD at five homes is acceptable. I haven't found exactly what's required for a PUD in terms of size. We'd like to build a whole village and start with, start small and keep adding on.
Yeah, you should.
But would five be acceptable to get into a TIF? And maybe expand beyond that. In the city, it's going to be hard to find property where you can start with five and expand beyond that, but we would be watchful and go for it. So that's what we're thinking, and we're just wanting your opinion. We want to be respectful. But we want to stand our ground simply in trying to meet the needs of that income level of our workforce. We don't want to build bigger and better, you, wouldn't it look better if we, wouldn't it be better if, well, it depends. If you can't afford to buy it and live there, no, it's not better.
Yeah.
So would you give me your thoughts? Appreciate it. Or questions?
I've got a couple, have we done this somewhere before?
We did a, something different for Land Bank, we did a rebuild of a deserted house up in Bear Lake.
Oh.
That was a big home, it was fifteen hundred square feet with a single garage. So we did a masterful rebuild on that at a high level. And so we couldn't sell it to the low incomes we wanted, we had to let it go at market value. However, we did put into it two three hundred square foot efficiencies.
That's how it's gonna, okay.
So that whoever bought the house, at some point, they could have their grandparents live there, they could have a college student come home, live there, or divorcee live there, or friend in need live there, and they've already used it that way.
Okay.
So we completed that project about two or three years ago. And it was a big thrill for the Land Bank and for the village of Bear Lake. But we want to build new. That was, that was a terrible experience in a, in a really radic building, we had to take it all down with the frame and the foundation.
And you're talking, look, you want to build at least five homes to get this grant that you've mentioned also?
Yeah, if we can get into TIF financing, that really helps us keep the cost down.
So you, and you would probably look at a... I'm just thinking, well, if we got a piece of property big enough in the city to build that, that's all I'm thinking.
I'm watchful, I have a couple of ideas and I'm watchful for them, and...
Oh, well, you've probably been looking.
Sometimes we have to wait for them to emerge, but...
Yeah.
We've got our feelers out there.
I, I think it's something to look into, I'll tell you true. I've been reading about it, yeah, it's going that way. Smaller homes people can afford.
On the duplex, is there an opportunity for a garage?
Excuse me?
On the duplex, is there opportunity for a garage? Or is it only on the single family?
We could just plan for a parking pad, concrete parking pad beside the house on each side.
So...
It's a matter of cost, again.
No, I get it, and I'll speak for myself, I grew up in a city where five hundred and twelve square feet is spacious, and when I was younger, I would have loved an opportunity to, to own something like this as a, as a first home, as a second home, whatever, you know, when I was younger. I really like the two bedrooms, but again, I like, I like the size, I like the concept, and we need housing, we need housing desperately. And owner occupied, owner, the, the chance to purchase a home is very appealing, so I like the size, I like the concept, I like everything about it, I know, I know we have limitations on the square footage, I, I would certainly be open to amending that, this has been a trend now for well over a decade, and so people are living smaller, they are, we have all of the outdoor amenities, so I think anybody that would be interested in this area, and not so much the house, there's, there's plenty of space, and people could be very accommodating, so I love the idea.
Thank you. Yes, it is a lifestyle choice. I want freedom to travel, I want freedom to go get my education, you know, any number of...
Stuff.
I don't want to have a lot of stuff.
Yes.
A lot of cleaning.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we ought to look into it, go ahead, Mark, I'm finished, thank you.
So what, what is the target buyer? Be young, young, younger people or older people, or what's your target to buy this and...
Yes, both of those, seniors are looking to downsize and looking for housing, and there's a lot of aging seniors, and they need wheelchair adaptability. They want to be able to age at home. And so sometimes they want the, not the five twelve, but the seven fifty with a, with a garage, because they sometimes need a caretaker in-house. So for a lot of seniors, that, that two bed would be very beneficial. For a lot of younger folks, either way, if they've got a family, if they had a couple of kids, they want the two beds for sure. If it's a couple, or they don't plan on children, or a single, or they want to just take a step and then move on later, yeah, they want the, the small, the five twelve is fine. So, yeah, both, and, you know, we, we want to do pre-sales when we get into something, find out who wants what. And make that wheelchair adaption if needed, and... Yeah, so let's see what the audience is, I'm hearing a lot. Casually mentioning, oh, I wish we had that when I moved here, you know, I would be right on that, young people. That came looking for an appointment, looking for a job and a, you know, a house to live in.
And I also believe that freeing up homes that the elderly have, that it's one person living in a five-bedroom, two-bath home, they don't have a place to go, so if we were able to create a PUD, and if they told their neighbors and their other neighbor, and even if they got together, they bought some, then that frees up that larger home for the new families that are coming in that want to start having children and stuff. So I think it's a great opportunity.
That's what we should have been working on last month when we didn't have a meeting, we could have been making an ordinance for this.
Or if we planned it as a PUD, we don't need to change the ordinance, so...
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, so it would be some conditions and some things that we'd have to discuss in a PUD, but...
It'd be worth talking about it, I think.
So our next goal is to get some property.
That's the thing, yeah.
Yes.
I don't know about the property, if you're looking at...
Is there infinite laundry? Maybe I just don't see it on the pages, but I would assume on the bigger one, I just didn't see it on the small.
Stacked washer and dryer, both, in both, yeah.
Great.
And dishwasher, yeah.
Oh, okay.
A few years back, we had a developer come in town for the Olsons' property, great senior housing, and that was, to me anyway, it seemed like a goal. It was a win for the community, fortunately it was turned down, but that, that was going to have seniors go into that complex and open up housing such as we all talked about here, and I, I think that's a heck of a win, if, if you can, if this can be done, so...
I spoke with Art Olson about two years ago about the property on Jackson Street, I believe, north of the lumberyard. He's got five lots there, he said I'd be happy to have an offer on those.
Yeah, there you go.
So if you're favorable, that's the first place I'm going, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
That was my next question is...
And I'm watching...
Where would you, you know, build a duplex?
Yes, and I'm watching some other opportunities, if we can in the city. If we can't find that opportunity to get a little bit of a village feeling, you know, we could go out into the county, but now we're dealing with prices going up for well-inseptic, and...
Yeah, yeah.
We'd need some grants or...
Running gas and natural gas.
That'd take, yeah, that'd take all your grants.
Yeah, and another option in the city, if we can't find five, maybe we'll build one duplex or two duplexes, if we can find two lots, you know, or that kind of thing, but what we want to do is, hardest to build a village, where we're tiny, it's aware of life and it's celebrated, but more than that, where you've got what you call cohousing, or, you know, sidewalks connecting in a, in a central area with, with clustered housing and property to use, and bicycles to loan, and recycling, and gardens, and all that. That's what we're after.
Your units, would they be, the Housing Commission has several standalone houses, are they about the same, would these be about the same size as those houses?
I don't know.
Okay.
These are probably smaller.
Yeah.
Apartments might be of this size, but...
I thought the Housing Commission wants to combine, Teresa, is that true?
I don't know, yes.
I thought maybe they want to start combining these units?
So much of their inventory...
And get away from the satellite locations?
It seems like they want to rehab, is my impression.
So many of their units are way beyond life, that, I mean, they, they said that last time they came, and I, the community really needs something like this.
We need additional housing, for sure.
Well, you know, for the seniors, maybe at, at the lecture center, you know, I know you spoke about that.
I'm speaking to Howard, and they've got some pretty big corporations interested in doing that work, but he's, he's got all of our concepts in his request for proposals, that's why I responded. We're not likely to get the contract.
Right.
Even for the backyard, the little corner we're after, but we're sure after that, that would be ideal. Because it's, when you talk about addressing your neighbors for what you want to do, well, there it's a whole community being created around the vision that I have for community.
Where was that now?
If we were at the senior center, if we were...
Well, I was going to bring that up, because they're looking for ho, for housing, or they're interested, I don't know where they are in the development stage, but I, I would pitch your, your thing, because it makes sense to me, just what they're looking for.
Yeah, I'm talking to Howard about that for sure, but they've got several big builders interested.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And so they're waiting till early July, I think, before they make a call on what they want to do.
Okay.
So...
As Manistee ages, and, you know, we want to get younger.
Yeah.
We need to get younger in this community, this, I, I personally think that this makes sense.
Hmm, yeah, that would be ideal for a village.
Can I just keep your deliberation or questions going, but I want to say thank you to Amanda, she's been a...
Teresa, that's okay.
Teresa, yeah, that's the wrong name.
That's all right, that's all right.
Teresa's really been encouraging and a tremendous help, and understanding...
I probably pay her for it.
Understanding the breadth of what we need, so... She's still helping in concepts that are...
She's a good kid.
We could, we could do some of those little lots that are available around the city, but it doesn't quite fit what we want.
Yeah.
Pressure we want to make so that we're accepted in the community as tiny developers to do more of the village concept or what we want to do.
That senior center project, that would look nice. Yeah, that would be ideal, yeah.
That would be sweet.
You can probably build ten, eleven of them over there.
So that picture that's on the screen right now, that, that would fit into Art Olson's five lots.
Well, that would be over here with Olson's property, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, see, in that, in that community, in that street, everybody got garages, so I wouldn't go for the duplex there, I'd go for the garages. Or at least garages on the end would be duplex in the middle, where it's not your next-door neighbor or something, but you want to be sensitive to neighbors wherever you...
Oh, sure, sure.
Is he still open to selling those lots, Art, Art Olson?
Yeah, he still holds them, and he says, both there and at the corner of Washington and, and Memorial Drive, he's got five lots over there as well. And he's not interested in selling the lumberyard yet.
Okay.
If we could build on the north side of it, and if he'd let us nibble away at some of his property, we could build a village, so we'll, I can't, I don't know what Art wants to do with his property, but... I'll be talking to him.
Okay.
He's very encouraging, anything you want to caution me about, or say, hmm...
Well, let's, I would like to keep this going.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're all in agreement here.
Yeah, I think we should have a work study on it, just, you know, see about what we have to do to make it happen, I would, I would think so.
When the time comes, yes, I'd welcome that.
Yeah.
Well, maybe I'll get lucky and be back here next month.
There you go.
Yeah, who knows, who knows, times are changing.
Commissioners, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate you, appreciate your work, it's hard work. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Master plan.
Master plan.
You're up.
So we have chapter five, goals and objectives. It's not a very long chapter. Just a lot of kind of regurgitated information that we've been doing over the last few months and all of the participation. I believe on page one of goals and objectives, under the word events, the second line, I just noticed that "pop-up planning" is in quotes, we just need to change that in quotes to "pop-up," so I noticed that, so that was just one minor change, but the rest of that, does anybody have any input or anything they'd like to add on that first page?
I wouldn't have even noticed that terminology, so...
Yeah, yeah, because if you look at "pop-up planning" on, what, the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph, yep, so there it is, right here where it just says, yep, yep, just right there.
It's below in the, that other paragraph.
Yep, and then it's over here, so, yep. So I just noticed that.
Well, I, I do have something.
Okay.
In the Harbor Commission minutes.
Harbor.
They were talking about having a event to attract people at, down at the marina.
Okay.
I kind of like the idea, having cigar night, or wine and cheese events, things like that. That's kind of cool. Wish I would have brought the minutes, but I ran out of the house early, so, oops.
But I can look those up for the, that you said for the Harbor Commission.
Sure.
To have an idea. Because I do want to have one more event, especially like we had talked, I know we wanted to do a little bit sooner, but when I talked to Williams and Works, they said probably September would be a really great time, because we'll just be finishing it up, having everybody do that last-minute revision, give it to everybody as a draft, and kind of go from there, so...
And then the part that I, or not to interrupt, but the part I gave you last month as far as the aged population and how the new configuration is looking at helping the aged get around, is that incorporated, or did we look at it at all?
It's incorporated, I already sent Tanya an email about your suggestions and the corrections and stuff.
Because it had to do with the seniors walking.
Yep, the article, yep, exactly, yep.
All right.
So page two. I think the only thing that, under improvements in infrastructure, so let me go to that page for everybody. So improved infrastructures and amenities. I do want to let all of you know, I don't know if you were aware, but two weeks ago I went to Midland for a WAI conference, it's a walkability institute, it was teaching us how to write a TAP grant. And while we were there, my other cohorts that I was with, we didn't really know what kind of plan that we would like to do and how to help the county of Manistee. And we've thrown around many, many ideas, but one big thing that we have decided that we would like to pursue is the safe routes to school. So with that safe routes to school, I thought if we can get that on the ground and put that in the master plan here in that section, I thought that talks about all of that, so... And again, I know Kyle's here, so don't quote me on any of this, but this is just our wish list, we'd love to do the safe routes to school, and in with that, you would have the school that's across thirty-one, and so you're talking about that twelfth street and thirty-one corridor, that little section, intersection there, it's very dangerous, it's hard to see when you make a right onto the highway, and the Goodwill is on the left. We'd like to talk to, and we did talk to, three different people from MDOT, they've talked about putting possibly some cones and some staging things there to make it feel like we need to slow down, that we need to look at our corners, and while they're also going to be doing that road study and the road diet and that paving, and look at a different crosswalk to go across there, so trying to incorporate that, so that's like a phase two for us, and then later we want to connect a lot of these trails and things that are around the county and do a lot of connectivity with the trails. And so you're walking, you're biking, the safe routes to school, traffic, we could incorporate all of those things, so that's kind of our goal, so once we get a little bit further, I want to give that to Tanya and kind of put that, maybe, because again, our master plan is what we're building our foundation on, so...
Well, we did, several years back, on, on twelfth and the highway, we did discuss, on council anyway, stoplight there.
Okay.
Stoplight and/or a skywalk, which kind of, that one's a little tough.
Yep, and that's...
But it, you're right, it is dangerous.
Yeah.
Especially on the west side going north, turning, yeah, it's a pain.
Yeah, or even making that left-hand turn, maybe it shouldn't be a left-hand turn there or something. Yeah, yeah, either way, or right on the opposite side, but you've also got that school down there, and that would be right down this, the route, so and then we also have a bike route, but it's only on twelfth, and it kind of doesn't go anywhere else, so there's been a lot of things that we've been noticing around the city with this group.
I thought with that bike route, a couple of years back, didn't they specify a route through the city across one of the bridges?
I know they did down Maple, but I don't, I don't think twelfth was part of it, but I know it's clearly marked on Maple.
But, yeah, to come through the city though, I thought, and then Washington Street, they were going to make a bike path to get out of the city? I don't, I thought they were talking.
Down Prime Memorial and...
Okay, yeah.
They were talking about it now, I don't know if they did or not, but...
Stoplight would slow traffic down because it is...
Turn around.
Now that Catholic's gone, you know.
Rest his soul.
Fifty-five miles an hour through there.
Has, has the traffic study been done, I'm asking because I've been through a couple already in another location, and MDOT is not very cooperative, they deem that there aren't enough fatalities at an intersection, and so the city or county or fundraiser or whatever would have to pay for it.
Right.
So is that the route that you'd be looking at, probably?
We tried to get one on Eighth and the highway, if you recall, a stoplight, but there weren't enough accidents to warrant a stoplight.
Okay.
But, yeah, we've gone down those roads. But, yeah, we've gone down those roads. Yeah, but anyhow, it doesn't hurt.
You're asking little kids to.
Yeah, people change, you know, ideas change, so, yeah.
So, safe routes to school, we haven't approached the school yet, I mean, we've got a lot of people to come on board, but there's fifteen of us on our group. And they're, you know, from all over the county, so. It's been really nice.
Well, I would think generally, if there's a school crossing or kids need to cross the highway, I can't believe they wouldn't, MDOT wouldn't put a light there.
Need more fatalities.
They should have to be careful.
Do kids got to get hit by a car before they do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Accidents.
Car accidents, something.
Yeah, that's how it goes, yeah.
For them to fund it.
They haven't put one at thirty-one and Red Apple yet, or was it Red Apple? Out by the bungalow? And that's been.
Oh, yeah, that's another one, yeah, we were asking for that too.
That's a dangerous one too, so.
We've actually had a couple people get killed in an accident there.
So, MDOT is. What would that, what would it cost, what would it cost for the city to put one in?
Six hundred thousand last time I looked.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think it was six hundred thousand when we were, and it could be more than that now because the one that we were looking at, which is why there was, and that might have just been the, the portion, it was a partnership that roundabout at twenty-two and thirty-one. Ended up being a partnership, and so part of it was funded by MDOT and part of it wasn't, but they were not amenable to, they kept multiple fatalities there, I mean, dangerous, multiple fatalities, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't fund it. So they, we finally got them to partially fund it, in partnership, but.
There you go, all righty.
Okay, so, back to page two, sorry that we digressed a little bit, but.
I digressed.
Page two, was there anything else that you saw, or?
Anything.
Anything else, okay. So, page three, we're on.
I apologize, the only thing I was going to ask, and I, I just think about procedures, policies, plans that I write at work, there's a lot of specific language. Things like the DDA, things like, what if in the, what if between now and the next time this gets opened, the name of the organization is changed? I typically like to use a little more, more vague language, like city commissions or something that would describe it that isn't very specific to that acronym.
Yep.
That's just me, because then you're, you're opening it, you're reprinting it, there's a lot of cost.
Yep.
I did see that recurring throughout, but.
Okay. So, to page three. I was really hoping maybe short-term rental would have passed and we could have put something in there.
Turn to send it back to them, that's what I say, let them figure it out.
But, maybe we can add to that paragraph, but we'll see on that one. Housing here, I don't know if I saw anything about tiny homes. So, that was something that I thought with this housing area, with this goal, because it's welcoming a variety of home, housing types.
I assumed that it was in there.
Yeah, and, but I thought, you know, maybe we could, you know, exactly put it in there, let's add it in, so.
You could, I mean, there's, because it specifically says accessory dwellings, live-work units, townhouses, similar units, you could add the language in there.
Yep.
So, would you add that as number five, tiny homes?
Yes, we could, that's what I had it down as, next one.
Or add it to number three, would that be, because we would have to amend some ordinances, wouldn't we?
Well, this is just a goal to have, yep, so it's just a goal.
Oh, okay, so to encourage new, got it.
Yep.
It's just a goal.
Was there anything else on page three? Anything else that you saw?
That was good, Ken, you all right with that?
Yeah.
All right, so let's go to page four.
All right.
I think I did want to add something on community and economic development. I have circled number four. Use and promote third places and their resources like the local public library to facilitate and support workforce development. I also thought about why not West Shore Community College?
What does the term "third places" mean in the, in that context?
An additional place where somebody could go to help write a resume, do some work online or study, I think, just.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Wouldn't that work into number three though, Teresa, elaborate?
Oh, you're right.
Local educational institutions?
Yes.
Yeah, not, not just educational institutions, but any, any place that offered
Yep.
Use of services, equipment, whatever it might be.
Yep. So, I think we've got that. Let's see, goal, goal two, at the very bottom it says, Manistee Lake Area Communities Guide. Can anybody tell me what that is or what that's referring to? As land along Manistee Lake becomes available for purchase or vacated, revisited the railroad relocation for the Manistee Lake Area Communities Guide?
I don't know what that.
I didn't.
Because I knew about the revitalization plan.
Yep.
Which really isn't revitalization, there's nothing there, so, I didn't understand why it was called revitalization, but I'm not, are you familiar with that?
Is this the consumer's property?
Yeah, the consumers.
Consumers property by municipal dock.
It sounds like it. What's Manistee looking at?
Deep the trains on the south end of the lake, as I understand it, wouldn't it?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking it's that area, consumers and the railroad, once it gets vacated.
Yeah.
About fourteen acres, along thirty-one.
Oh, yeah, that'd be nice there, yeah.
Yeah, but what's the communities guide?
Yeah. I didn't get a chance to look it up, so.
Build condos, you'll build more condos.
They talked about if it, if it did come to fruit, having retail or commercial along that stretch. And then residential on the backside.
Okay.
If that fits into that.
Okay.
On the water side, eh?
Well, I'll still look it up or I'll talk to them and see what that says.
There's a developer's resource guide on the city site, but.
Yeah, but.
I don't see anything with that particular language.
All right, then let's go to page five.
Page five.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, go ahead.
It's an actual map of the area that they're specifically calling Manistee Lake Area Communities Guide.
Okay, what's that?
Where is that?
It's exactly where we said it was.
Along the highway, by North Side Bar?
Yeah, it goes from.
Yeah.
Okay.
North of the channel to.
Yeah, from the bridge, all the most to the marina.
All right.
Yeah, the train, train bridge.
At least that's what the map says.
Yeah, been talking about that for a second.
I never actually heard it called that, but.
All right, page five. Goal three, I wanted to add a couple more to it, I thought three was a little lax on the goal number three. Support efforts to preserve and include historical properties that help foster community character. I was going to bring this to my HDC and ask them for some input on that.
Okay, good idea.
Yep. At the bottom, it says right here, work with Manistee County Emergency Management. Do we have an emergency manager or an emergency management there?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It's the article in a paper yesterday, Alan Rachel, isn't he?
Yes, Alan Rachel.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Okay.
They helped out the storm up north.
Oh, okay.
Oh, great.
There's a group, yeah.
It was just something I wasn't aware of and.
Alan Rachel, that's.
Well, we're out, I'm sorry.
So, do we have anything else to add to page five, I'll get with the HDC on that one, and anything else? All right, let's move to page six, we have transportation. I had for goal two. Number four. Prepare a waterfront master plan along Manistee Lake. Has that ever been done, is there one?
No.
Need to do one, so, that's interesting.
We could do one, but no, it's never been done.
No, it's never been done.
Yeah.
Very good idea.
Thought it was.
Yeah.
Especially with the development lately.
And maybe keeping our RC recertification, I mean, might be something we could add to it.
Sure, you never know.
Yep. Is there anything else then for goal two or goal three? For transportation?
Question, what, what is the complete streets resolution?
I don't know, so where was that at?
Support the adoption of complete streets resolutions and ordinances.
Oh.
I don't know what that is.
Okay, we'll ask, we will find out.
Something on MDOT.
Right.
With that thought in mind on the street qualifications, the, as I understand it, the coming off the old hospital, this hill is a private street?
Yes.
Yes.
And the city does not maintain or upgrade?
Not anymore, correct.
Okay, that, all right, is there any way we could get them to do it? Do we think, that is one hell of a hill.
Go to a city council meeting.
Go to a city, okay, I mean, at least they bought the building, but, yeah, that road is atrocious. Yeah, that's true, okay.
All right, so that was page six. Our last two pages, or we have seven, eight, nine, all right, let's go through these.
Natural resources, we're on seven.
Yep, we're on page seven. I think, under goal one, we need to put in there, under these four goals, one of them needs to be work with EGO, work with DEQ, work with Army Corps of Engineer, all of those things, but I think that Coast Guard, anybody else that we can, we're kind of getting back to naming, again.
I would say state and federal.
The state and federal.
Agencies, yeah.
Yep.
That sounds like a good idea.
Because Eagle used to be something else.
Used to be something else, exactly.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, great, thank you. Anything else for seven, because then we go down to the parks and recreation and the goals.
Now, wouldn't that be where they punch in their, their plan?
Yes, we can take the county's park and rec plan and we'll put that as an appendix or a link.
So, I mean, yeah.
In there, yep.
And the city has done some pretty extensive work on their seven.
Upgrading, yes, they have.
Yep. So, in goal two, they had quite a few of those on there. But you know what, I just noticed, so it has goal one and a number one. And then it goes to goal two and there's, it starts with number two, it shouldn't start with a number one there.
Well, or, or identifying a quarry line goes somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah, huh, oh boy, scrap the whole project now.
Although, that, that's all about acquiring land, so.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I think it's just numbered wrong.
Yeah. Yep. I like that splash pad, I've been for that all along, that's a wonderful idea.
Right, yeah.
Will you be out there, Roger, in that splash pad?
I certainly will, young lady.
All right.
They are, they require so much maintenance.
I know.
I know the, the city's probably not going to love doing that, but they.
Didn't they have a big issue with Traverse City?
They have an issue everywhere there's everyone built, anything with water.
Yeah.
Bad or something, and.
We can wish, we can wish.
We can wish, you got it down right.
Number seven, acquire property west of Washington Street to Harbor Village Channel to extend riverwalk to Harbor Village Channel. What is that?
Harbor Village.
West of Washington.
The north side.
On the north side of the river.
Yeah, it's north side of the river, all that empty land is that goes to.
Oh, oh, okay.
What, the sand?
Off of, off of fifth. That sand company, yeah.
It's off of Fifth Avenue, something from Fifth Avenue.
Now I'm cooking with gas, so.
Sand company owns it.
So they don't have to cross the bridge.
Gotcha.
So, when another part falls in the river channel, it'll be on both sides.
And then number eight, we had that consumers' energy property that we talked about before, so.
Yeah.
Um, let's see.
Along that part of Legion, yeah.
Oh, goal four, number two, Blue Water Trail Network, I had to look that one up. Blue Water Trail Network, I didn't know we had such a thing, but it, there is.
Or the actual trails.
I believe it was trails, just actual trails, but they're called Blue Water.
Well, it is either.
It might be the kayak ones, no, I don't remember.
Yeah.
But actually, I didn't know that was a thing, so.
Blue Water Trail Network.
Oh, I see where you're at.
And then I had to look up number four, zero entry boat launch.
Zero entry boat launch.
You don't need a dock, you can just walk right in and.
Come, where's, Aronak County.
Where are you at, what do you?
Need a dock.
Um, it looks like that's where it originates because it says become a part of the network.
Part of the network, yes.
Blue Water Trail, Aronak County, Michigan. Three.
There's a Blue Water Network?
There must be some connections, and it, and it, it looks like there are waterways.
Okay, well, makes sense, it says blue water, so, blue.
Yep, kayaks, stand-up paddleboards. Have to look at that more.
Okay.
And, page nine, very last one, anything else to change? I didn't know what number seven was.
Cru?
Yeah.
Cru is the rowing sport.
Oh, okay.
Mostly out east, but it's big at a couple of schools, my nieces did it at CMU.
Okay, that's, great.
I like.
Traverse City is probably the closest crewing community that we have.
Wow. And. I thought number seven needed more goals, so I think we need to come up with some more for number seven here.
Ah, recreational programming.
Oh, yeah.
What, what do they mean by programming?
I would say, um, summer sports.
Events, that kind of thing.
Oh, okay, I was thinking recreational sports or, you know.
Activities, so, sorry, sorry. Yeah.
I mean, do we even have a little league here anymore for the kids, midget league, anything?
No, I just, I was talking to the Legion, or what you would call it, and he said because of the age of the population of the people. He said, back when we were youngsters, our parents, that's why we had a little league, but now it's aged, people are aging. It's all the grandparents that are having, there's no more little kids in families, they don't have enough. I thought Legion always had a baseball team. I said, how come we don't have one, because nobody's interested. So, but, yeah, that's why, yeah, we used to have them all. Civic club, used to have a team.
It is, I love baseball.
Remember the good old days, Mark?
Yep.
So, we, I can get a clarification of what exactly they're talking about recreational programming?
Yeah, it sounds to me like it's more like, it should be activities, not programming.
Okay.
Create a community ice arena, so we do have the, the outdoor one at Sands Park in the winter time, so does this mean like something all year round?
Isn't that subject to change?
I, it just says create a community ice arena, so.
No, but I mean the Sands Park issue.
Oh, it's always.
I thought there was controversy over the school property in the Sands Park, about swapping or something?
I know there's been, yeah, who's going to maintain it.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know the, the teen center over there, that's, that's been an issue for years, but, I don't know, I don't know. I know the, the teen center over there, that's, that's been an issue for years, but, I don't know, I don't know what they're gonna do with it.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I hope it continues, but I don't.
Build an outdoor pool, do we want that in there?
No.
We have a lake.
That's right.
We have, in a high school.
In an indoor pool.
Yeah, in a high school. Maybe that's what they meant, Lake Michigan, Menneid Lake.
Yeah.
Menneid, yeah, there you go. You never know.
Like the outdoor amphitheater, I know there are a lot of events down by the beach and by the river and it'd be nice if there was a larger permanent structure.
Well, getting back to number one, I mean, we do have West Shore College, I mean, it's twenty minutes down the road.
Yep. Okay, take out number four.
Well, and just like with the, the little league issue, if we don't, if we don't have enough kids to do little league, do we have, is there a huge hockey population or figure skating? I haven't heard a lot about it, so.
No, there's no hockey.
There is.
Hockey, they're playing out of Luddington or Traverse City.
Yeah, hockey, I think we have a hockey population, but baseball.
No, our net's about the only one with the hockey.
No.
And you're either, like I said, Luddington or Traverse City.
Oh.
Cause he couldn't find a place or Muskegon, he was thinking, I don't know where he decided to go. But no. Baseball, that's just high school baseball's all we have.
Yeah.
And then what about number seven? Don't we already have the?
Yes, we do.
We have a couple at least.
Yes.
Yep.
By the beach, isn't that a district?
There's one on both sides, isn't there?
Yeah, Red Smurf Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
And we have the, it would be nice for a dog park on that side of town, I think the only one that we have is the one down by the beach. My dog.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So when we look at all these, these goals and what we wanna do, what, how do we, how do we get the resources or the funding to do this, to do any of these?
Ask Theresa, hey Theresa, she gets the funding.
Some grant funding, if you can.
Yep, that's when we start to get creative and we talk about.
Businesses.
Yep, businesses, grants, um, the DDA, the chamber. Yep, this is just kind of a starting block, the, you know, again, the foundation, because then what, if we have those things, if we wanna ask for something, they would say to us, one of the questions on the grant would be, what does your master plan say?
Yeah, what do you want it for, yeah.
Yep, do you have that in there? So that's why we're trying to take chapter by chapter, review them, absorb them, what can we add, what can we take away?
And most of this came from, either from the existing one or those?
Yes.
Pop-ups and.
Yes.
The surveys, that's what.
The surveys and the pop-ups, yep.
And if I might, another one we always looked into too is a zoning board. When we're doing the master plan, see what complaints come through the dam, if there's something we can correct.
Right.
So they don't, okay.
Yep, kinda like we did with fences, starting July first, we'll have a fence permit back again, cause I kept getting a lot of phone calls for that, yep.
Yeah, cause otherwise, yeah, deal with some of the problems we have, so.
So then also, there's gonna be an appendix in an area where it's gonna reference the beach master plan too. So that's gonna be in here, I'm not sure what chapter, but that'll be in here too.
Sure.
So on intergovernmental relationships, explore and carry out meetings with neighboring communities to build relationships. Is that within our county? Or is that outside? Are we reaching out to other communities outside our county, you know?
When I read it, I just look at county, but I think we need to add, yeah, within the county, I think we should add.
I think we oughta consider the neighbors that we're with, no? I mean, like Luddington or can we do that?
Right, Mason County, and I've been, I've been working with Mason County on the chill grant, what they've been doing, what we've been doing, so I'm always calling and, and talking to them.
Ten Z north of us, you know, we're all in the same boat, pretty much.
Cadillac, working with them, that's right, so we can add that to it.
Outside county lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, neighboring communities and counties.
Yep. Alright.
I think that's good. Anybody have anything to add? Ken? Good for right now.
I did notice in just the way my eyes work, um, the, uh, consistent grammar, punctuation, structure, that kinda thing, I would just go through and clean it up. I know she's going to, but.
But still, would like a clean copy at a time.
My eyes hurt, so.
That's right. That's right.
I write a lot of these, so, yeah, it.
Oh.
Notice them.
Yep. Alright, I'm all finished.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs.
Here, right next to you.
Alright, uh, public comments, communication, is there anyone in the audience that has any comments? You have name and address, you have up to five minutes.
Uh-huh.
Laney Ruska, fifteen oh seven Vine Street, and you're correct, twelfth or fourteenth street, Old Hospital Hill is, was voted on last night to be closed.
Oh.
The city, we had a legal opinion from January, cause we have been closing streets, it is a private street.
Yeah.
But the owner is willing to, you know, provide the city with a right of way or an easement, whatever, you know, the guy's a nice guy, he'll do whatever we want, but the council majority, um, voted to close it. And it sounds like there'll be a, a sign that basically says it's a private drive.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I'm not quite sure, you know, I'm not, I didn't vote for it, so we'll put, leave it at that. Also, the ninth steep boat launch?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe that's also owned by consum- consumers, and I'm on the Parks Department, uh, Council Commission. And we've talked about setting up a, a crewing if we ever could, you know, the rowing?
Yep.
Group there in conjunction with the high school, because there's a lot of opportunity for scholarships for students. And there's also a vacant building there that would be ideal, you know, that old brick building everybody looks at?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, and you could leave the equipment in there, so, you know, it, it's some of this stuff, and that's why, you know, the Parks Commission sent the letter, cause a lot of the things we'd like to do would overlap. And there's still T-ball at Morton Park, and there is little league at Duffy. And maybe it's not as many teams as there were in the past, but there's a couple of fields at Duffy, so, you know, just, I'm, just wanted to provide some information.
Oh, absolutely, no, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much. T-ball at Morton's Park.
Holy smokes.
Huh?
Fourteenth. Anyone else? No? Okay.
No, sure, yeah.
Move along to staff.
Staff.
You've got in front of you the Michigan Planner Magazine, some great articles.
Charts and graphs.
Yes, so, good one to read, so take that with you, read that.
Alright.
And then I want to prepare you for next month. Let me see, I've got it here in someplace. There it is. Um, next month, we are going to be having a public hearing at our next meeting, I'm gonna put that on the agenda. We have a couple neighbors that want to have a public hearing on Thursday, June twelfth. This just came into my office a couple days ago. The hearing proposes us to review and request to vacate a portion of city-owned streets or alley property um, back, behind a couple parcels, but I just don't wanna say anything yet until it goes into the paper, so.
You said on Thursday?
Yep, it's, yeah, our next, yeah, Thursday, our regular meeting, so Thursday, June twelfth, meeting at seven o'clock, we'll have the public hearing then.
Uh, question mark, if I could, alright, now, they want us to, what, about a closing of a street?
Um, let me read it to you again. The hearing proposes is to review requests to vacate a portion of city-owned street or alley property.
Okay.
Located behind a couple of parcels.
Okay, with that thought in mind, how then could the council go and turn around at their meeting, vote to sell city-owned property without asking us? They're just asking us for permission with that.
Well, these are a couple residents that are asking.
All of us are residents.
These are residents that own property.
Yeah.
And they want to vacate or they wanna request to own the property behind them that has not been used.
Which is owned by who?
Oh, some of, it, those come before us, before.
Yep.
Okay, those come before us, yeah.
They've done that on Duffy.
Yeah, and if that, if that's the case, but I was upset about what I read about the city selling property without our.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Yep.
No biggie.
But I just wanted to give you a heads up about that's gonna be coming, and then this is gonna be going in the newspaper, it'll be published in the newspaper.
You drop, here, okay.
Oh, and to answer your question, Roger, it will be going to us, but then also after us, it then goes to city council to get approval.
Right, right.
So those are, that's the process.
But with that thought then, Marco, I thought that what we had it settled, where we were considered, if the city wanted to sell city property, didn't the planning commission have anything to do with that, or is that out of our hands? Members?
Which one?
City-owned property? Planning commission should have something to say about it?
Only.
That's council. That, well, actually, it's.
Well, cause remember they had that issue with the dump on the south end, they said, we were complaining in the end, and they said, well, no, because that's not city, that's not in the city, you guys are in charge of what's in the city limits.
Years, years ago, when Ted Taylor was city manager, he wanted to sell.
Oh, that was city manager too.
Smaller, non-conforming lots to the neighbors, and that wouldn't have went through us.
Well, and if, if they planned to put something on there and need to change, then, then it would come before us, but as far as selling.
Alright.
I guess it would come to us for a lock combination if that person did buy it.
Okay, so much for that idea.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
That's all I have.
Kaylin? Nothing? Okay. Move along to member discussion, Ken?
So I guess what, so the city council turned down our last meeting with the exemptions on the short term?
Yes.
And what was their reasoning?
It's a good question.
Four-three vote against.
Uh-huh.
Does that mean it can't be brought forward again?
It is gonna be going back forward to them, maybe in June or July, it's not dead, they're still tweaking and working on it. They have the ordinance committee, which are three council members, and we're still trying to work towards something.
What, 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 what was it they didn't, they didn't like, that that's why they turned?
They were not very specific.
No, they weren't.
Not very sus, no.
They just didn't like it.
And there's some things that they still wanna tweak on the map, you know, with the, and I think the cap number still, and just, just a few things. We're getting close.
Okay, so do we need to reload it now?
Nope, it's not up to us anymore.
On their hands.
We've, we've done our job.
Yeah, we did more than our job.
Is that all, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay. Shall we?
Nothing.
Roger?
Alright, what are they doing by Fort Kianos on Riverwalk? I see it's quite dug out and it looks like they got timber and dirt, are they?
Friconos?
Friconos.
Fritanos?
Friconos.
Or whatever.
Yeah, friconos.
Are they building a ramp or something there, or do we know?
I don't know for sure.
Okay, I just asked, I just, what?
Would you like me to tell you?
Yo.
Go for it.
It is gonna be a switchback for handicap access, so that's why.
It's the zigzag, okay, ma'am, switchback.
They have more to the eastern end, there, there's one.
Didn't they have one before? Are they just rebuilding it? I thought they had, just like that before.
Well, this is closer to the county.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, so they're making a walkway for a handicap down to the Riverwalk?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
On this end.
Yeah, on this end.
Nice.
Alright, so thank.
Probably the Elks is too steep. The Elks is too steep.
Elks are too steep.
The Elks.
Steep.
Going down.
Oh, yeah, 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 that is, yeah, that would be.
Uncheap, steep.
Yeah, yeah, that would be nasty. Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Rog?